All right, good afternoon. I hereby call this agenda review meeting of the Natchitoches I S D Board of Trustees by the video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is President, President, apologize, Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lea Beth App was with us just a few minutes ago. She indicated she'll be rejoining us later in the meeting. The Reverend James Urban.
Here.
Dr. Tyrell Roman, have you joined us? Okay, hopefully Dr. Roman will be able to join us via telephone here shortly.
He may be joining just this moment.
Perfect. Would you interrupt me, Les, if you seem to want so we can get it for the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farshid Nirmad. Thank you, Mr. Nirmad. Thank you for joining us today. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend unlimited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who followed the instructions on the meeting noticing my notice for registering to speak during the public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties today, and we ask for your patience. I'm gonna add here that we've got kind of extra technical difficulties today because of the winter weather, so we are hoping that all of our members will want, we will be able to stay connected throughout this meeting, but please be patient with us as we navigate this. If you have any...
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
There is a phone, there is a phone number on here that is Dr. Roman's, but it shows he's connected. I, I don't know if he can hear or hear us or speak.
Dr. Roman, can you indicate that you can hear us or speak? Hmm, maybe having some audio, audio problems. Mindy, while I finish reading this up, would you mind reaching out to Dr. Roman to see if he can hear us and we just can't hear him?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we've got you. All right, Dr. Roman.
This is Dr. Roman.
Let's, please let the record show that Dr. Roman joined us at 12:12. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at t o m a at o a g dot Texas dot gov. As a reminder, the meeting today is an agenda review meeting. No action will be taken today. And y'all are gonna have to bear with me, I'm kinda having to jump from screen to screen here. I don't have any printed copies, so I may be a little slower than normal, so I'll ask for your patience. All right, so that's gonna take us to public comment. We did have, no one signed up for public comment today. The next item is the consent agenda items, board meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the board minutes? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to business office reports. I believe that starts on page 19 in your board book. Ms. Barbrick, are you, can you hear us and are with you, with us today? Oh, there you are.
Yes, I am with you. Good afternoon, President Fitch, board members. Dr. Trujillo. I'll probably be serenading you with wind chimes as I'm speaking, so they got quiet at the moment, but I'll begin with the budget amendments, and we have very few this month. You'll find them on page 20. T J R is asking to move $6,000 from function 11 to function 13 to pay for a virtual teacher conference. And B Q J is requesting to move $3,140 from professional development to instructional leadership to pay for administrator professional development. Do you have any questions on budget amendments? I'll move on to the investment report. Again, our earnings are very dismal. But we are still earning a little bit. Any questions on the investment report? All right, I'll move on to donations. We received $100 for school uniforms from Michelle Peck and $1,000 from Timpton Ford for the boys' basketball team. And if you have any questions on any other of my reports, I'll take them now.
All right, hearing no further questions. Give everybody a minute, all right? We'll move to item C, consideration of audit engagement letter for physical year ending June 30th, 2021. Ms. Barbara.
All right, it's that time again to engage our auditor for next year's audit. This is, this contract with them was renewable for up to five years, and this, it will be our fifth year with them. The total projected fee will be about $52,000, and this year's actual fee was $51,689. It's a slight increase. Any questions on the audit engagement?
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move now to item four, the action agenda for Thursday. Item A, recommendation to name the CTE addition at Natchitoches High School. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trujillo. On February the 8th, the facilities naming committee met via Zoom and made a recommendation to the superintendent to name the new CTE addition at Natchitoches High School, the Malcolm Richter Center for Advanced Careers and Innovation. In accordance with board policy, C W Local, present at the meeting was a board member, Dr. T C Roman, a representative from the campus or facility, Jacob Lusk, representative from the business office, Lisa Barbrick, a representative from the maintenance department, Raffle Rue, and Cindy Robertson, and a representative from the police department, Chief Sandra Mary. Also included, community representative, representation from Ed Poole and Jimmy Mize. Recommendations that we, at the board, consider approving the new name.
Did you say that name again?
Malcolm Richter Center for Advanced Careers and Innovation.
Any additional discussion or questions? All right, and then we'll move to item 4B, consideration of bids for Brooks Quinn Jones HVAC bond project. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. On February the 4th, 2021, the district accepted bid and for proposals for the Brooks Quinn Jones HVAC replacement project. In your board book, we've included the bid tabulations along with a letter from Mr. Armey Curtis, our architect. I will note that we've discovered that the budget impact on your action sheet should read $1,512,600. This project came in just over budget by $82,600. Mr. Curtis, Mr. LaRue went back and sharpened the pencil to work on this particular proposal and value engineered $35,000 from the project to get it down to the overage of $82,600. We'll be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Mr. Martin, what is the total now?
I'm sorry, let me say again.
What is the total expense at this time?
The, the total budget impact or expense is $1,512,600.
Okay. I don't see the $600, but I guess I have to get to it because what I'm looking at, it says $1,510,000.
Yes, sir. Coach Nirmad, you're correct, that wasn't, and that's what I'm explaining to the board. That was an error on our, on our part. We, we left the $600 off.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be corrected, I assume, before Thursday.
It will be corrected prior to Thursday, yes, ma'am.
Pam, this is Dr. Roman. I was just gonna see if you can hear me.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, I can see, I can hear you well because I put on Bluetooth and it's like I'm there.
Wonderful. Any other, any other questions on the bid?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir.
So, the bottom line, I mean, I guess I'm asking, even after they reviewed it, are we still $87,000 over?
We are, we are, Reverend Urban, we are $82,600 over budget. There was some talk in looking at this, this particular project that we could have saved other money or taken off some other stuff, but in, in the next few years, we would have been doing it again anyway, so the, the recommendation is to go ahead and do the job right the first time.
So, was this missed in the original bid or calculation?
No, sir. The, the bid simply came in higher. Remember, we put these numbers together 18 to 24 months ago.
Oh, inflation.
Oh, well, yeah, inflation, COVID, shipping, logistics, but it, it's a little over what we had anticipated almost two years ago, though.
I would like the board to know that, that number was a little higher at the beginning of the week, last, last week, and so visiting with Michael and going back with Ralph, we were able to sharpen that number a little more, so pleased with the drop in the number.
Do we have a number that's, you know, that shows the drop?
This is the number.
This is the number.
Yeah. Originally, Michael, what did it start off at?
It was $117,000 over what was budgeted, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm concerned because as we look at quite a few of our projects, you're like quite a few of them are coming in over budgeted, and I just thought I would...
Yeah, I might ask, I know at our last meeting, Ms. Barbrick, after we had awarded those contracts that we did at our last meeting, I had requested that the board be sent an updated spreadsheet to kind of show us where we're at. I have not received that yet. Is that possible that we could get that in our hands before Thursday so we can kind of see where we're sitting overall?
You will find that in the board reports. Let me get you the page number.
Okay.
I saw it today, Pam.
I missed it, I apologize.
It's on page 91.
Ooh, now this one's gonna have to take, this is gonna take, well, thank you, I'll study this one, it was a different, it's a little different format, or it feels different than the last one we saw, so.
And if you'll see in the middle of the page, there is a red number, $1,547,600. That is the original bid amount, so that is higher than what is currently coming in.
So, right now, we're showing the bottom...
So, the bottom line, if with what we know today and future projects coming in right in at budget, we will have an excess of $299,000 at this moment, if things came in on budget.
So theoretically speaking, based on these numbers, we've got the funds there to cover the $82,600 overage.
That is correct.
And those funds are, are from our general fund, or is that from the money that we got for the...
Fund, isn't it?
It is from the bond fund and interest earned.
Okay.
Again, I want to reiterate that is assuming all future projects come in at budget.
And that does not, that number, that overage number does not include, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, the soft cost that we are anticipating on Carpenter McMichael and the new CTE.
No, I believe it does.
It, you believe it does, okay?
Yes.
So, you do, you do think that we, we, Ralph, do you have, I mean, a good feeling about the fact that we may be okay and not go over what we plan to spend?
We have a couple more projects for the following summer that are mechanically related, similar to this project, the ninth grade center and the high school chillers. Those numbers are gonna be also tight, I believe, same, same products.
But when you say tight, does that mean we may end up having to pay more?
I'm, I'm not prepared to, to make that call. Again, these are numbers we put together quite a while ago.
Right.
I'm not gonna promise you that, that they're not gonna be over, I'm not gonna promise you that they're gonna be under. That, that's the following summer, you know, we're, we're still two summers out.
Okay.
I can tell you, though, Mr. Montoya, that when we get numbers that come in, just like we did this last time, I do appreciate Ralph and Michael, we're able to go back to the table and, and really see how we can lean in a little bit to sharpen some numbers. Unfortunately for us, we were able to kind of whittle down some numbers. We may get to a point that we're leaning in, and there's no adjustment that will come, but we won't know that as, until we move forward, but we're not taking the, the, the number immediately as it's given. We're, we're going back to the table and saying, okay, what else can we do to tighten this up?
So, we went from 132,000 down to 82?
117,000 down to 82.
So, what, as a district, what did we sacrifice to, to get, to get the number that...
Within this project, upstairs in the mezzanine of the B Q J property are three very large cabinets that we feel have a life expectancy of 25 to 30 years, and we are just gonna play that life expectancy out on those. That gets us out 15 more years. We will replace the condensers that are tied to those units because they do not have that longer life cycle.
So, when you're estimating in 15 years, we'll, we'll probably have to replace those cabinets?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be right, we'll be right back at it 15 years. Been 15 years, much of this equipment we're putting in will need replaced. You get a 15 to 20-year life cycle on all this equipment.
Mr. Urban, that's a great question, and it, it begs to explain further that as the team was looking at, within the next few years, if we did not plan accordingly, there are some things here that we need to go ahead and just put it in the, in the docket. Otherwise, if we didn't, we would be coming back to the board in the next couple of years with a couple of things that we could have just taken care of right now. And, and I actually believe, and I'm no construction guru, but I'll defer to Ralph, that if we waited and we did these separately, it would cost us probably more than having it done collectively right now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any additional questions regarding the bid for the HVAC at Brooks Quinn Jones? Hearing none, we'll move to item 4C, first reading of Tasby Policy Update 116. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch. The administration has looked at and reviewed Update 116 from Tasby. As you all are aware, it contains many legal policies. However, the board is only responsible for those local policies. We did have a further revision to local policy D C E, local to match what we currently, how we currently practice our operations. We'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have with regards to Update 116.
This is a question, I have a couple of questions. If you go to page 13, it says, what are the districts, what are the students, because you know, and requirements for that, just writing medications? Are you there?
I'm trying to get to it, Coach, tell me which policy.
It's...
F F I C.
I guess that's what it is. I don't know exactly. But I know it's at page 13 of the board.
Okay.
I mean, not the board, but...
Okay. And which paragraph we're looking at, Coach?
Okay. It's basically page 2 or 3. Okay. The district has said that the district would purchase non-prescription medications for the use of district athletic programs, doing, you know...
You're talking about the athletic program provision that talks about the districts that purchase non-prescription medication that may be used to prevent or treat illness or injury in the district's athletic programs, is that the one?
Yes, we have written exact policy on that, or any instructions. If, if involved, I don't know how to explain how we have done it. Okay?
Go ahead, Coach.
Okay, and the program has a so-called medical box, and that medical bag of box would be refilled by the athletic trainers every year. And through that, we always advise to put some ibuprofen, some, some antihist, not liquid form, but chewing bar for heartburn, stomach indigestion, so-called, Benadryl also for bright eyes or so on, and a cough medicine. Cough medicine, it has terms of a syrup, whether that is so-called candy type for, you know, reduction of throat, okay? Now, recently, also asthma medicine, we would ask the students, if they have any asthma medicine, put their names on a device and put it in a medical box, determine they can use it, of course, as a handoff. At the school, they normally put in a nurse's office. At the same time, I can see my nurses is gonna be examined for epipen injectors. How are we gonna deal with those? We're gonna have illustrators to be, I don't know what, athletic trainers on the side to inject those.
To inject, like, EpiPen?
EpiPen.
Yes, sir.
The person that used to be the nurses would handle it. When the person is traveling on the road, and the athletic trainer is already traveling with them, are they allowed to do that as well? Are we gonna permit that?
Coach, I think that that is part of required training now for our athletic trainers is to have the EpiPen training, and then, and then, of course, they would have to call 911 after they injected it or administered the medicine.
Right. Okay. Sorry, I was, I was having a difficult time hearing, and therefore I couldn't understand the question within itself. Could you repeat the question, Mr. Fosh? Yes, sir. When the athlete is traveling on the road, there are some kids, they have asthma, or maybe have diabetic, and they have to be dealt with. Are all medications allowed to be prescribed or actually used or injected by the athletic trainers or not? If that is the case, do they have to see a training? Training, okay. Do we have to offer us to do that or not? Am I making it too complicated? No.
And I think, Mr., if I understood, Mr... Go ahead.
I was just saying, within the, in the wording, it, it said only a licensed athletic trainer or physician would be legally able to do it. Yes, we have to have it be right, to make sure it's a complete part of our policies.
All right. I'm having some trouble hearing, too. Did everybody get their, is everybody satisfied with the answers on this one?
I am, I am having trouble understanding some conversation, but I, I think I got the gist of all of it.
Reverend, are you good?
Can you hear me, Pam? This, Dr. J?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I think, I, I understand, we have, we have some great questions. I, I believe there's something similar required for nurses to do the same thing with EpiPens. I, I think I remember running across that, that it's a, it's, there's a similar requirement for the nurses to have that same... I believe there's something similar required for nurses to do the same thing with EpiPens. I, I think I remember running across that, that it's, it's, there's a similar requirement for the nurses to have that same course. So we could double check that to see that, you know, that this is going to be something that happens here, here and wherever else.
Yes, and Dr. German is correct. It is requirement of our nurses to also receive this training. Coach and board, I will follow up on the question with, with our athletic director as well as our athletic trainers and have a solid answer for you on Thursday.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move to item four D, consideration of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two instructional calendar. Mr. Martin.
Thank you again, President Fitch, board members, Dr. Trujillo. The administration put together a instructional calendar for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year with the assistance of Mr. Maury Turb and Dr. Hill and her staff and many others, also presented it to the District Advisory Committee and then put it out to vote. They had two options, option one and option two. Put it out to vote with our teachers and staff. They went so far also to put it out to vote on paper for transportation and student nutrition point services staffs. The votes came back and the staff overwhelmingly voted for calendar option one for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Be happy to take any questions, twenty-twenty-two school year, excuse me, be happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Was that option one, Michael Martin, was that option one, the one that pretty well is the same as the, as FA schedule?
Yes, sir. In fact, the, the committee went back and aligned both calendars with the Stephen of Austin Spring Break.
Any additional questions on the proposed school calendar? Hearing none, we'll move to item four E, consideration of Nacogdoches High School twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two course catalog, including new courses offered for the high school credit. Dr. Hill.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam President Fitch, board members and Superintendent Trujillo. You'll find the action sheet for this on page five twenty-four of your board book and then you'll see the Nacogdoches High School Course Guide begin on page five hundred and twenty-five. I do want to extend a thank you to Dr. Corley, Ms. Ivy, the counselors at the high school, Mr. Lusk, for getting this ready for us today. And then more importantly, or equally of importance, if you'll look at page six hundred and twelve, that begins our new courses that we would like to offer during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So I'll give you a moment to maybe turn to page six hundred and twelve. You'll notice that we were approved to offer our National Defense Cadet Core Program for this, for our students as of next year. So we're super excited about that. We have finalized the job description and that will get posted soon for that instructor. As you continue on, and we did list the page numbers of each of these new courses that correlate to the course guide that is located within your board book. We have a scientific research and design for biomedical science as well as engineering. We have some new practicum courses and in visiting with Mr. Lusk with some of the new changes with the CTE curriculum from the state, they've just renamed a couple of these courses. So you'll see practicum in entrepreneurship, practicum in construction technology, practicum in health sciences, EMT as well as phlebotomy. UDC that we have listed again are NNDCC because it does count or it can count as PE credit for some students. You have the first level, then you have two, three and four. Of course, as we're offering it for the first time next year, any student can take the course that's currently enrolled in Nacogdoches High School. But welcome our incoming freshmen who are wanting to partake in this course. On the last page of our courses, we have our general employability skills. We'll make note that that is an innovative course that has been submitted to TEA and, and that's for any LEA to want to adopt that curriculum into their existing course catalogs. And then our last two courses are robotics one and robotics two. So I'll pause and see if there are any questions about our new courses.
Dr. Hill, this seems like a, a great moment. First, I want to say this is, it's always exciting to see the new CTE offerings that we're kind of moving toward and refining and as we, we continue to build. You know, earlier tonight or earlier today, we discussed the renaming of the, the CTE building that's under construction there. We're getting very close to completion on that. So I'd love to hear maybe a little preview of where we're headed. I know that my understanding of course is that after that building's complete, we're going to have one year where our students, our existing classes will be moved to that building so that we can do the remodeling and work we're going to do in those labs at the, the high school building. But then those classes will move back to those laboratory classrooms. So what are we looking toward as far as future CTE offerings as we're expanding into that new building?
Sure, I'll do my best to answer your question. Of course, I have Mr. Lusk on the line as well as Mr. Martin and Superintendent Trujillo because I'm not always involved in all of the conversations, but I'll tell you exactly what I know and understand. So two, two courses that you see listed on our new course offerings for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is robotics. So I do know in the plans that robotics will be permanently housed or at least, you know, when the building opens as well as, like you said, those new or those existing courses may be moved out there to ease the burden of the transition. And then after that, robotics will stay. It's my understanding that, well, let me back up and talk to you about robotics for just a moment, is I've charged Ms. Autry as well as Mr. Lusk to create a robotics plan, a three-year plan that will even begin down at the elementary level. In the past, in Nacogdoches ISD, we've offered robotics, but it's typically been allowed for our gifted and talented students and maybe an after-school program. But by allowing robotics being offered during the school day, then it opens it up to all of our students. So our, our future with robotics is to continue to grow and grow. Again, beginning at the elementary, having some middle school courses as well as moving to the high school, offering VEX opportunities. You have two different types of robots, VEX and first. And so engaging our students with some potential opportunities for competitions. That building can be used for even for us to house robotics competitions as well as some UIL conferences or competitions that we have. So I, I say that in that because it will have such great flex space, even some of our elementary programs will be able to possibly even check that space out. If my memory serves me correctly, I do remember some discussions with possibly offering some adult education courses at the end of the day after all of the Nacogdoches High School kids have been, you know, have gone home for the day so that there is no mixing of adult students as well as our, our students as well. And so that's, that's what I know, but I will defer to Mr. Martin and or Superintendent Trujillo if they have some additional information regarding the facility.
President Fitch, I'd like to add to, to the conversation that's there. Our, our main priority is going to be enhancing the opportunities for our high school students beyond the traditional innovative studies that we've been having. For instance, we might explore in, in, in expanding our construction trades, that's something that we don't currently have that can go a little bit deeper. So exciting to have some conversation with Mr. Lusk about expanding that direction. The other is looking at the, we do the auto mechanics, but understanding the industry that is here in our immediate back door would be exploring the possibility of what can we do since that has been designed to bring large vehicles in to provide some studies with the vast of diesel mechanics. So our, we have a, a group of students that are workforce ready and would be able to transition over into employment. Along with that, we did have at one time a fire, a fireman study, a fire and paramedic study that was there for some time and I've asked Mr. Lusk to explore that possibility. We're very blessed to have a fire department that is right there on the, on the property and in dialogue with our city manager and the mayor with regards to partnership with the city. That's something we might be able to look at is look at workforce ready for our students as we're looking that direction. So we're really excited about the opportunities that our students will have and also in partnership with SFA, with President Scott Gordon, they are undertaking a tremendous construction down on I sixty-nine or soon to be I sixty-nine. And so ongoing dialogue with, with regards to the university to see how we can partner up with the, you know, university, Stephen of Austin, with regards to some of the services they'll be able to provide. Now, these opportunities are going to be tremendous for our employees as well because our employees will be able to, for lack of a better word, I can say they would be able to moonlight, providing their services and sharpening their skills where they can offer for not only Nacogdoches students but SFA and then come back and be an asset to our students with the programming that we're able to offer there in that facility. We're really excited about what that facility is going to be able to offer. Now, Dr. Hill, there's only one entity that will be permanently housed in that new construction site, correct?
If you're referring to robotics, yes.
So the rest of the square footage that's there would allow us to really bring in some of our CTE programming and expand some of the services that we can provide in that location that we have there. Equally, part of the, the bond and part of the construction planning is we are looking at renovating and updating current CTE locations and with that comes state-of-the-art new and innovative practices in those areas that we have that are already in the base. So we're really excited about the, the potential of, of the direction that we'll be going and really excited to have Jacob Lusk with us and looking at those opportunities that we would provide.
I know at the Nedco meeting the other day, they were talking about kind of refining what Nacogdoches is really great at, you know, and, and focusing on those areas. I would hope that there's some discussions and kind of, would you say, a connection that we're, we're working with them to kind of define what those programs may look like. I know one of the examples they mentioned the other day at the Nedco meeting was in, in the medical field, for example, we've got between, if, if a student starts off in the medical field at the high school, be it phlebotomy, I know that's a program that we already have, but I'm sure, and I think we've got EMT, but other such programs that between Angelina College and SFA, they could continue going to school, building on that and, and that medical field was one of the ones that was a natural fit for us. And they had identified some others. So I assume we've got some collaboration occurring on that level?
So, yes, ma'am, as far as I'm concerned, I know myself, Dr. Corley, as well as Mr. Lusk have a Zoom meeting set up with Larissa on this Friday. So, yes, ma'am, those are the conversations that I have been involved in, but I believe there's another gentleman that's been visiting with some others in the district.
Okay. Well, just like I said, I know it's, I know it's still early, but I don't think it's too early to, to, to start talking about how we envision this, the CT expansion to go and really put together a well-thought-out plan that, as, as Dr. Trujillo has mentioned, that works with both Angelina College, SFA, Nedco and our local industries and, and really connects everybody together to accomplish some, some great things. I'm, I'm super excited.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We are excited as well. So we look forward to engaging her in conversation further on Friday.
And Dr. Trujillo, as we move along in this process, it, it might be worthy of a, a board workshop at some point in the, in the near future to kind of talk about plans more in depth on, on where we see this vision going.
Absolutely. Would love to, to get that scheduled.
Back to Hill.
Yes, sir, Reverend.
Is, is, is there just a brief response to the, the impact of the ROTC program for our students as it relates to if they should choose to go active duty after being involved in our, our ROTC program at NHS? How, how would that impact them going into active duty?
So, yes, sir, that's a great question. Thank you very much. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that this NNDCC, that's the acronym for it, and forgive me because it's so long. We just want to make sure that the curriculum and it's not a pre, you know, we want you to go into the military because they are about teaching citizenship. And so I want to make sure that that's, everybody knows that that's our first priority and their first priority. You notice that Navy is in the description of this and we clarified that you do not have to go towards the Navy. You can go into any branch of government. In one of the jobs, in what I'm sorry, not job descriptions, I apologize, and one of the descriptions, and I believe it's found on page five sixty-four in your board book. Basically, and I think this is to your point, once they, once a cadet, which would be our student, presents evidence of successful completion of at least three years in this NNDCC, they are entitled to advanced promotion to pay grade E three upon initial enlistment in an active or reserved component of the Army, Navy or Air Force in a pay grade of E two in the Marine Corps. So I hope your question, Reverend.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying that for me.
Yes.
Now, Reverend, to piggyback on that, if one of these high school students decide to join or go to a higher education that offers an ROTC program, then there are more scholarships that can be provided via the military. That could either be either at SFA here because we partnered with SFA and they've been instrumental in our conversations. And also with, for instance, Texas A&amp;M or any other university that offers an ROTC program. Our students have, they, they would be coming, up until now, our students decide to go to ROTC school, they started ground zero. Now, our students with the programming at the high school will go in there very well-prepared and be able to use that as their advantage for additional funding that can provide them support for continuing their education. Now, the whole world changes then because now they're going the commissioned route. They would not be necessarily going as a non-commissioned, they would be going the commissioned route, which means they would be an officer in one of the military branches as well. So this is the, the future of our young men and women as they look at the military in that direction. And being a veteran of the armed forces, I couldn't be more proud of the fact that we've got an opportunity to do some amazing things with our students that, that make a decision to serve our country.
I'm very excited about that. I know, thinking back to graduations, we always have a number of students who choose to go to the armed forces either as a career or a mechanism to pay for additional schooling after, after they finish their enlistment. And this is wonderful that they'll be able to enter at a, at an E three enlistment.
Absolutely.
And I, I, I also want to come back, I didn't, I didn't point it out and I, I do want to really congratulate you guys on the addition of the robotics one and two. You know, I think that's something we've needed for a number of years. We do have opportunities at the elementary level through the, the GT program, but those students that would participate in that and they may really enjoy it and then they got to the high school and there was really nowhere to go with it. So I'm so glad that we're going to have that opportunity for those students who are interested in, and that's more than just building robotics, that's into, that's coding and we know how important coding is in today's world technology.
Absolutely. Thank you. We are very excited about that new program.
Dr. G, I wanted to say something with this. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think it's really brilliant. I'm very pleased to be with such a like-minded group of trustees and, and all the people that we work with. These CTE things are very important and the fact that we're looking at expansion is really critical because it takes a while to get the inertia going. And the medical field is wonderful because in, in all the, the aging of the boomers, there's going to be always increase in the number of people that are certified or qualified to take. to take not the lowest position but proper position for them. So I think that the higher number of certificates we can offer to our students, the better off we'll be. I remember reading something in this, the new legal, I think it's required that they have five certificates. Maybe somebody wants to address that or talk about that. I think maybe that number has gone up or at least it's, that's what I read. And then something else that might relate to military and this CTE. I saw something about Purple Star and I didn't really understand that in the legal stuff, but I think it maybe applies to this area. So if somebody could address Purple Star and maybe educate me or others about that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Gorman, was the reference to the Purple Star in the course guide or was it in the?
It was in the legal stuff.
Okay.
Maybe you're thinking about, it was in the policy update?
Policy update, huh? And the same way about five certificates being required, that was in the legal updates, but I think that maybe attaches to what we're talking here. As we consider adding new programs, we want to make sure we add new certificates. And there could be like, if you're building, this is a certificate, this is, that could build three in one area. And I'm not sure in ROTC if they build any kind of certificates that would be in this area or not. So we're kind of, we're kind of in two camps, but they're both very important.
Yes, sir. May I make a note on both of those two points and get back with you?
Sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Hill, I just did a search under Purple Star. It falls under page 118 in Board Book, Policy FDD.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. I am going to have to do a little bit of studying though before I give you, yes, thank you.
No, 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 that's fine. Just a reference.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
President Fitch, I might add to the conversation with regard to certifications. We're going to be looking at, there are opportunities here at the high school that students continue and go through the coursework, they complete the coursework. And then we kind of fall through with not completing the certification behind it. And that could be in software, that could be in medical, that could be in a variety of areas. So one of the things that we're looking at is if a student is taking a coursework based on the course handbook and those courses provide certification, we are making a, we're missing a big opportunity to arm our students with certifications that are already aligned to the curriculum that are in place. This also helps us with the CCMR, the college career military readiness component that the state measures our success at the high school. This is what's exciting because we're kind of looking at a holistic approach where if a student or a teacher, should I say, is teaching a course that has a certification that is attached to it, then we need to do everything we can to provide those opportunities. Now with that comes a cost. So we'll have to determine what does that look like because if a student needs to take a certification and they don't have the resources to complete that certification, then that's a conversation budgetary that we need to look at because if we have a high, low or socioeconomic group of students that are doing everything they can and taking the right courses, but they're not taking the certification because of a financial shortfall, personal financial shortfall, then we are not meeting the needs of that kid. So we've got to make sure that we can evaluate if they're on a specific pathway and they don't feel that with a certification, really, we've done a disservice. So we're looking at certifications and each one of those certifications to Dr. Gorman's heart work tremendously towards our CCMR result that the states come back. So everything we're talking about, and these are not CTE-only courses. This can be in the humanities, this can be in the sciences, this can be in the mathematics and in the technology realm where there are some certifications that are there. And if these kiddos come out with that certification, that makes them that much more marketable so that they can go out there and be job force and workforce ready. So those are the things that we're looking at to Dr. Gorman's heart with regards to some of the certifications that we may not be following completely through. Now, that's purely speculation, but that's Dr. Hill and myself and Mr. Lust would need to look at is how many certifications? Give you, give an example. An English teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, they have end-of-course exams they provide students. We can measure the success of students based on that. We also need to look at opportunities for courses that don't have an end-of-course exam but to have certification. How many students that are in a classroom that can come out with a certification are truly coming out and meeting the criteria for them to be certified? That's a measure of success with the programming and causes us to really evaluate the effectiveness of what we're meeting the needs of the kids in that pathway.
I really appreciate the fact that you're looking at that because that's, we want our graduates to be employment-ready.
Absolutely.
So if I may interject, I have a couple of good phone friends that are on the line with us today. So regarding the certifications, both of, all three of us, we've not heard of the five mandatory, Dr. Gorman, that you were referring to. However, we do know that's a part of if a student takes and passes a certification, that is, that earns them one point towards our CCMR readiness indicator as well as multiple other factors. And then regarding the Purple Star, I will continue to do a little more research, but at this juncture, it is unrelated to NNDCC and it's for any and all campuses and making sure that we connect our students and families who are supporting the military. So we'll get back with you specifically on the Purple Star and we'll do some research on the five certifications. But we believe that they've not changed the CCMR regulations. And so that's just if a student takes and passes the certification, it earns them the point or ends us the point towards our CCMR for accountability.
Dr. G says, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Gorman, for the great question.
Any other questions regarding the course catalog? Hearing none, that will now take us to our executive closed session. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074 and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now 1:07 PM. And for those out there joining us via Zoom, we do not anticipate returning to open session before 1:30. See you guys in closed. All right, let the record show, we're now reconvening into open session at 2:23 PM. We have one final item on our agenda, adjournment, and I will entertain a motion.
This is Mindy and I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do I hear a second?
James Irvin, I'll second.
Thank you, Reverend. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Did you get his aye?
We got his aye. All right. Thank y'all so much. We stand adjourned.
Y'all have a warm day.
Yes, stay warm, warm and safe.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Thank you.